Planning Commission meeting to order for the June 26 meeting. Roll call, can we have a determination of a quorum, please?
Chairperson Sattler. Vice Chair Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Doors.
Commissioner Eswin.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Commissioner Eswin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Eswin. Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none. We have two sets of minutes, approval of minutes. First, we'll take the April 24, 2019 minutes. Are there any corrections or comments or vote for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the minutes for April 24th.
Commissioner Eswin moves to accept. Do I have a second? I'll second. Second from Commissioner Borders, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have the minutes for the May 29 meeting. Again, any questions or changes or if not, a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Tingle moves to approve. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Preston, is a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Lee, modification of agenda?
I'm Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I'd like to move item G4, which is the tentative map, to be heard immediately after you adjourn as the Growth Management Commission. So it would be the first item under G.
So we'll be moving back to being right after Growth Management, correct? Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll recess as the Planning Commission and call to order, and I guess roll call for it to be as the Growth Management Commission. We need a roll call on that? Okay.
Chairperson Sattler. Vice Chair Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Doors. Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
Commissioner Eswin.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Again, public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Growth Management Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment on the Growth Management at this time? Seeing none. We do have minutes from May 30, 2018, from our last meeting. Is there any comments or changes or a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of May 30, 2018.
Commissioner Borders moves to accept.
One second.
I need to make a correction.
Oh, just a moment before. Commissioner Preston.
Okay, on page two, on the header, it says, "May 31, 2016."
It's up at the very top, under the draft, after the Growth Man-- you know, the very top.
All of them.
Yeah, it's, it's, just needs to be.
I have corrected that.
Okay, thank you. So--
Mr. Chairman, my motion still stands.
So we do have a motion from Commissioner Borders, second from Commissioner Eswin. All in favor? Aye. And Commissioner Wiggins abstains because he was not on the board at that time. Public hearing, GM-19-081, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for a resolution establishing the maximum number of residential building permit allocation under Growth Management ordinance for the years 2020 and 2021, and estimate the maximum number of residential building permits for the year 2022 and 2023, establishing the number of building permits allocation within the Department Development and General Property Owners category, and establishing a maximum average daily water usage for commercial industrial building permits as a threshold for Growth Management Commission review. Lee?
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Lee Plamow, Community Development Director. This item is a required annual recommendation per the Carson City Municipal Code and required annual action by the Board of Supervisors to take those actions that you just read into the record, which are summarized there on the, on the screen of the presentation, which is to, which primarily is to establish the number of building permit residential allocations for the, for the following year for Growth Management purposes. It's roughly been based over the history of the program. This started in 1978 and has been roughly based on a maximum growth rate of 3% over the history of the program. You have a complete staff report and some graphs and things in there, some information for discussion and consideration. And I'm just going to go over a few of the points briefly before getting into the recommendation and, and some discussion and questions about it. The ordinance also requires the following, those essential, certain essential resources to be considered in, in establishing these numbers for the following year. It started initially back in 1978. It was initially based on water and sewer and actually limitations on sewer capacity at that time. And there was a state moratorium put on them. The city had to come up with this Growth Management Program and come up with this, with the system. Over the years, other resources were added to the ordinance for consideration in establishing the, the annual limits for that. So just a little bit of background there. And then this is the, this shows the entire history of the Growth Management Program, with the top dark line there being the number of allocations that have been allowed in each year, and the white line, the lower line, being the actual number of allocations that were obtained. And obtained being somebody actually getting a building permit for a residential unit, which includes a single-family house. And one apartment unit is one, is one, one allocation. As you, you know, in your, in your report there, you see kind of the average over, over the last 30 years, it's been about 240, 42 units. It's gone up and down. You can obviously see what happened during the recession there with hardly anything going on. And we actually, last year, hit the maximum over the, just, just barely edged out 1996 as the highest number since, in the last 30 years, by, by a little bit. And that's primarily from the 370 units of the Carson Hills apartment complex up above the, the, next to Galaxy Theater, pulling them all this year. And that project, I just read, is, is under construction this year. So they were, they were building permit allocations pulled in 2018. They're under construction now, and it looks like they're, they're saying they're not going to open until the end of this year or, or beginning of next year before the use, the first units actually come online. But that, that was the bulk of that. And, and this is, this representation is that same graph for a shorter time period with distinguishing in the different types of, of housing products, with the, the base, that yellow being the number of units that are single-family detached residential. The upper part, the check, red check, is multifamily units. And in between, there are some other attached type of single-family products. Again, the vast majority of those last year were that Carson Hills project. I also have in here housing sales information. Not sure, it's not really a resource, not really related directly to Growth Management, but I think it's some interesting data that we get from the assessor that gets tracked and put like this. We can see that, you know, we're, we're up. I, I assume that before 2004, the prices weren't as high, so I assume we've been at a record-high median house, median price for, for single-family homes in Carson City with, been going up, this is the seventh year straight it's been going up, getting over $350,000 for the median price of a single-family detached home now. And another, just to point out a little interesting thing, I think in hindsight now, looking at the volume of sales in that early time period, going back, which, and this goes back to 2004, which we know now was, was a housing bubble. There was a lot of things selling. And over, but over the last few years, even as we're building how, a lot of, building more houses over the last couple of years, getting back up to higher normal levels of construction, that those, the, this numbers, I don't think it's just thing, it's interesting the number of sales hasn't gone up to that pre-recession time period. Okay, so we talk about Growth Management and build-out. What are, and, and where do we get, what's our, what's our long-range plan? What are we planning for? And looking at water and sewer capacity and roads and everything. You know, we, for our land use, per the master plan and the land use we have, we have capacity for, you know, we're estimating about 75,000 to 80,000 residential, plus the other commercial and industrial growth. What's, what's represented in the projections here, that, that dark line is the demographers' latest projections, I think they're about a year old, but it's their latest projections out past 2035. And we're kind of using those. Those are kind of a lower projection we're using for long-range planning purposes, and we have a higher projection there. But basically, they put us, you know, at a population, the lower, lower edge of the, what we'll build, quote-unquote, "build-out" population in about 25 to 50 years, depending on how fast we grow. And then I, I put on this chart, it's not in there, that, you know, you can see the, the column towards the right there showing how much of the population we have now and, and what percentage, you know, the, about 25 to 30% that we have left growth to get to that build-out capacity population. Let's see if I have any. Okay, so, kind of starting to wrap up here before I get to the, the final recommendations. Just the other thing to note, you know, there's, there's a lot of currently approved residential units out there. That's a total of about 1,700, you know, including the 1,500 single-family detached, 233 apartment units, 230 vacant subdivision lots. That's not, it's actually not an unusual number. Even through the recession, we've, you always have a high number of entitlements. That doesn't mean they're lined up to, to be built in the next year or two. Some of these, some of these approvals go out over many years, kind of like Silver Oak. I think over the next, over the next year, we have, actually, I'll cover that on the next, a little bit, but looking at the spike, over the next year, we don't anticipate that same type of spike the rest of this year. There's no other large projects like that Carson Hills that are going to take up a bunch at one time. We have another, a 62-unit apartment complex going in, I think this summer, or at least pulling the building permit this summer on Hot Springs Road, but no other real large projects that are going to take a large number this, this next year. Some other issues that have come up, and this is not an exhaustive list, you have, obviously, the comments from various departments and things in there, but, you know, school district does note that they're at or near capacity. There's a lot of planning going on. There's a lot of coordination between the city and the school district. They evaluate that not just annually, but within the school periods. Commissioner Border sits on one of their committees and, and so that coordinates, and they, and they, they have a committee for the use of their bond money and to discuss how they're going to accommodate the, the growth that's coming. You know, in their, in their letter, they talk about some projections of, of students that may be coming up and, and, you know, it's not, they're not unreasonable figures to assume some with, with some of the growth that, that's occurring, that they're, they're not unreasonable projections of what they might see in the next five years in terms of additional students. And then also, for consideration, I say, you know, as I mentioned, expected actual permits this year. The building industry's still struggling. I don't know if that's the right word, struggling, but there seems to be some natural capacity to be able to build homes at a certain pace, so I'm not sure that, you know, I think that, like last year, again, this year, there's, they don't think they're going to exhaust 679 units, so it will likely be less than that that would come in, barring any other limitation on the number of permits. And then I also want to note, long-term, you know, water capacity, we gave the, I'll note that we gave the water analysis update to the board, to the Planning Commission, and then the Board of Supervisors a couple of months ago. We're still working with them, linking that study and on a parcel, on a parcel-by-parcel basis of projected future development and water use capacity, current usage versus future usage. And I think the, the long-term implementation of that's going to include, you know, more, more link those two, land use and water use, and, and a continuously monitoring of that. And I think as we get to the future, I think we can, we can say now, you know, the next, the next 600 units aren't going to bust the water system, but as you get farther out into the future, you get closer to that, there may come a time, as we get closer to the limits of water capacity, where those decisions, those land use decisions are closely linked to the, to how much water a particular type of use might, might use. So that's the direction we're moving and working together with them on that. And we'll break back a more detailed report on that within the next year. So finally, just, just to wrap it up then, so the recommendations, based on continuing pretty much the program as, as it's been managed before, is to allocate 679 residential units for, that's it, that's an old slide, obviously, I fixed the first one, not this one, for 2020. It's not for 2018. 679 units for 2020. There's a split between the developer category and general category. That applies to the first period. They roll over into the second period, a little different. And then the max, continue with the maximum average daily water usage for commercial and industrial development of 15,000 gallons per day, above which Growth Management Commission review is required, which is another checkpoint on overall capacities for larger commercial development coming in and ensuring that we have water resources. So that's an overview of the report and what's in the report. Note that we do have various departments heads here to answer questions. I've been looking around to see if somebody from the school district was here. There was going to be somebody here. Hopefully, there is to answer questions. And I'll open it for questions.
Questions for staff. Commissioner Tingle.
I have four areas of concern that I would like to address. The school overcrowding is number one. Number two is the lack of access to primary health care and the lack of access to health care in general. And I would really would have liked to see somebody from Carson Tahoe Health here to address that concern. Third issue is affordability of the housing in this community when you're talking about the median sale price of the homes currently being built and the median income of the residents of this community. Those two don't converge. So very few people that live in this community are able to afford to buy in this community. So that is an interesting dynamic all on its own. And then the last issue that I would like to have addressed in some way, shape, or form, is the street maintenance, given the article that was in the Nevada Appeal about the $100 million price tag to bring Carson City streets up to standard. And if we are talking about continuing to do this type of development and approval of these building permits, one would assume they're going to be built on paved streets, which then will contribute to an already exacerbated resource. So I'm just wondering how the funding is going to be created to support the maintenance of these new subdivisions, these new streets, that are going to be built in order to support these 679 residential permits. So if somebody can answer any one of those questions or all of them, that would be great.
That's it? Just kidding, yeah, just kidding.
Give me time, though.
Anybody from, anybody from the school district here that I'm missing, raise your hand? No.
Unfortunately, not.
Yeah, no, I thought somebody, somebody from the school district was supposed to be here, so, and said they would be here, so apologize for that. Yeah, and looking, so, well, with the, school overcrowding is, they're nearing capacity, they're nearing capacity and are overcrowded and are, and are planning for it. So I think saying they are already overcrowded is probably true in some cases, but overall in the district, I don't know that that is necessarily how they would put it. I think they have concerns about capacity with growth, certainly, and are working on it. And I wish, and I would like them to come, give a presentation on their, on their plans and bonding. And as you read in the paper, they have, you know, they're looking at options, including the purchase of properties to, to provide additional space for students and move students around. But I don't, can't really speak for the school district specifically. I mean--
They presented to us not too long ago, Lee, like, in the last six or eight months, they were in on something, I know the school was here, and gave us their projections and discussed, you know, the difficulties.
I forget what the issue was, they were here on something. Healthcare is not noted as one of the resources unless the, there are, there's other resources or services as determined by the board, so I think that's something, certainly something you could raise. Usually, that's a level of service issue outside of what the, of what the city provides. So now typically, one of the resources that we make, that we ensure is adequate is kind of a private function, not a government function to ensure it's there, not listed on there in the code. Again, we've, I think both you and I have tried with the, with the hospital in particular, try to get them to give us an update on plans. And they do have plans, as noted in here, because you brought this up before. They do have plans for some expansion now at Carson Tahoe Hospital. Medical offices are being built. I can't speak to the level of service, of medical service in Carson City. Affordability of housing is, but interesting, and kind of a, so, one way to make things more affordable is to build a lot more houses than we have right now, so that we have a better supply and there's, there's more affordable housing. And I think we have real estate experts here, I see how, no, you're looking at me like I'm crazy, but I think supply, it lowers, lowers, lowers the price. So I'm, there's a little bit of, and coupled with, in terms of providing the services and the, the taxes paid, affordable housing does not necessarily pay its way for other government services and needs to be subsidized by commercial, leading to street maintenance, which is not only paid for by residence property tax, but commercial property taxes and other taxes by the sales of goods in Carson City. So this is where I start to, you know, not, I, I don't know the answer of if limiting the number of permits and, and houses in Carson City would have the effect of improving things that cost money, because it would certainly stop those direct impacts. But I know, because we, even with our Growth Management limit as it is, I've received the phone calls from financing, development finance, asking about it in more detail, that have concerns that we have limits at all on the, on the amount of growth. So there could be, in limit, in saying, "We're not going to allow too many more houses that might potentially house workers for new businesses." I don't, I don't know the impact. I don't know the economics overall of that, of that effect. It's a complicated, it's a complicated question. You brought up a lot of things that are all very good, that if we can solve, I think everybody would, but it's a difficult issue. Somebody from Transportation here, Curtis or somebody, is there anything else you, I think the question relating to funding to support maintenance, is there anything you
Good evening, Curtis Horton, Public Works. That's a great question. Unfortunately, we're not prepared with a detailed answer at the moment, but we'd be happy to come back with our Transportation staff and look into the issue and see if we can provide you better information on the subject. But Lee's right on the beam. It's a difficult question. It'll be a tough one to answer.
You have questions?
I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. I understand that it's not an easy solution, but when there is an either-or kind of line drawn, that either we as a community figure out a way to come up with $100 million to fix the current streets just to bring them up to standard, or we continue to drive on poorly maintained streets. I think it is an issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, and probably should have been addressed a long time ago, before we are looking at $100 million shortfall in the budget to fix this issue. So I guess it begs the question, when is some sort of discussion going to be held about this issue? And it should be within a public forum, and it should be open to all manner of solutions, including maybe a impact fee on future development, and I don't mean $1,000 per lot impact fee. I'm talking about something a little more substantial that might support the maintenance of the streets that are going to be built as part of a new subdivision development, even if on a limited basis. But something needs to be done to address this, instead of the citizens of this community who currently live here having to bear the burden of that future development, that something needs to be done before we get to this point, five more years down the road. And it's a $200 million price tag instead of $100 million right now. So I just, I feel like something needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, whatever form that takes. It just, something needs to be done about it.
Thank you. Lee, what, I, I know in, in a couple cases have come forward, we have had fees for fire in schools, referring to the Lampa production, whatever. Is that being changed under consideration for all developments? Or, I mean, what keys that or whatever?
That would be initiated by the Board of Supervisors, any consideration of impact fees, which, which could include, and there's been a discussion in the past about both fire and streets, impact fees for new development.
So right now, it's just on a, I mean, on a case-by-case basis, is?
No, right, right now, there's no, there's no impact fee in the Carson City Municipal Code.
Even though it was--
Considered a fire fee that was offered up as part of the overall project, but it was not, there's not a impact fee ordinance. was not, there's not an impact fee ordinance.
Gotcha, thank you. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I, I think one thing that kind of confuses me is that, I think one of the things in, in addressing your, the road situation, and I don't know if a lot of people are aware of this, is that, that Nevada has an interesting tax structure on existing buildings. And the, the tax structure, which I find absolutely fascinating, is that if you look at the property taxes that are paid by some of the very beautiful historical properties, residential properties, their tax structure, their taxes are considerably less than some of the new construction. And because of that, it is difficult for people to go ahead and get the revenue from that, because that's where it comes from. So I did want to say that. The other thing is, is I have had an opportunity of living in different communities, and although I was born and raised here. So one of the things that I have, a couple of things that I have as a question, because I still can't wrap my head around it, is that we are approving permits for the future. However, we have issued approval for subdivisions now. Does that count against the permits in the future? Are those already allocated as permits, or are they? Because I, I see some of these subdivisions that have sat for quite some time, and they've sat for years, I mean, I'm talking 10 years, a decade where they haven't moved at all. And I'm looking at this and saying, okay, if they were allocated that, those permits, couldn't somebody else that maybe had the economic wherewithal be able to come in and take that, or is that allocation gone?
The tentative maps don't guarantee building permits in any given year. In other words, they have to come in in any given year, they're subject to those, to that cap and limitation.
Well, the thing is, is I, I just have a, have a one, one subdivision, I think that we're all aware of, and that's the 41 units over there at Eagle Station. I mean, that sat there for a long time. Did it have permits all the way along?
No.
Okay, so it just got, they're just getting them now, all over the, although the plat was approved?
Yep.
Okay, because that's something that I think is really important to understand if we're going to be doing this growth management. The other thing that I see that, is something that really surprises me, is that the burden that is being put on Parks and Recreation for developers, I mean, I look at, and I, and I probably am going to catch a lot for this, wear my other hat, but the deal is, is that if you have a subdivision that is surrounded by green belts, open space, parks, trails, you know, sidewalks and so forth, why is the city maintaining that shrubbery? I really have a problem with, I really think that the associations should have some responsibility for the adjacencies. Because I know I moved into a subdivision that was the newest subdivision and this and that, and I saw it and I went, wow, this is really great, it's got great landscaping, everything is wonderful, but I didn't realize that Parks and Recreation was responsible for it, and I know they're having a hard time finding people and so forth like this. And it's actually affecting the way I figure my neighborhood looked, when as a homeowner, I would have felt better as a, paying more in association dues to keep it up. So that's something I wanted to put out there, too. And I think all those questions have been answered, thank you.
I, I was going to say, Jennifer Budge is here, the Parks Director, if, but I'll just say, and she can jump up if I'm out of, out of school here, but I think they certainly own a lot of stuff that they've obtained over the years, including decades ago, and are responsible for maintenance, but I would, I don't think that's the philosophy today, is to take on more of those parks within subdivisions like that, or open space areas.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Boarders?
It, it seems to me, Lee, that in a lot of these that we've been approving recently, that there's been a requirement in there for the homeowners' association to maintain those areas. So I don't know how you go retroactively, I guess you can't, but I, I think it's up to us to make sure that going forward, we ensure that those kinds of clauses and things are in there.
And just another, another comment on the gas, that efforts have been made, because I remember voting for, I think it was three cents a gallon for up to 10 years, would be like 30 cents at the end of 10 years, and it all got shut down. I mean, the voters wouldn't pass it, it was going to go for roads. I think what happened was everyone got scared of Reno, where it was a percentage rather than pennies, and, and I don't think that was sold properly, I don't know if they tried it again, but I mean, I'd be willing to pay 30 more cents over 10 years for gas, but anyway, I know they're trying to do an efforts to do that, it's just a hard nut to crack, I believe.
Well, and I think there are some different schools of thought on how to solve this issue. When the gas tax got voted down, I think there was some concern that, okay, I'm, I'm going to be paying five to 10 cents more per gallon for gas to repair a road that is not in my neighborhood. And so I think there have been some thoughts maybe about creating maybe something along the lines of where your election wards are, where your Board of Supervisors wards are, that per that ward, your tax, I know, I know, it's going to be a, it's going to be a accounting nightmare to try to keep track of that, because, you know, cost accounting and fund accounting, but if there was a way to say, okay, I am more than willing to pay $10 more per month on my property taxes, as long as I know those funds are going to go toward repairing roads in my neighborhood, and I know every, I know.
You were close to beating them.
I know, but there has to be something that we can do, and I mean, we as a community, to solve this $100 million price tag. I mean, when I read that in the paper, I was like, holy palomino.
But it, it's like trying to explain to a person that lives on the first floor of a high-rise, why they have to pay for the elevator maintenance fee, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a, I have a comment regarding the streets, and it, which has been a, something that I've been involved with for a long time, and, you know, I think that it's something that we could look at when we look at the development standards, you know? It costs, when I was on the Traffic Committee, it cost $15 a square foot to maintain a road. If we were to narrow the roads so that we didn't have to maintain, you know, 30 and 40-foot roads in resident, for residential streets, that we could substantially redo, or reduce, you know, the, the maintenance costs. And I, you know, that's just something I think that we need to look at with the, with the Public Works Department and with the Fire Department, because I know that they're always saying, well, we need that turning radiuses and, and all of this, but, you know, other communities get by with much narrower streets, and it's something that I feel that we should look at.
Which would be affected by even on-street parking, if they couldn't park there, you could have narrower streets in that way, but then you have a parking issue, so.
Maybe.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Lee.
Just before we move off the topic of transportation, I do want to note, Carson City does have a Regional Transportation Commission, with a couple Board members and other appointed members that specifically deal with how funds are used and road maintenance, and this isn't the first time, you're not bringing this up for the first time, and this comes up at the Board of Supervisors, and RTC discusses it a lot, so, I mean, there is a venue for, to solve, to address the street maintenance issue. I don't, I think that's a very good point, you know, we're, we're making the notes because we are, we're going to be looking at Title 18 and the Development Standards, so that's going to be a point of discussion within your purview, but I did want to note that.
Any other questions for staff?
Not a question, just a, an information for anybody who's interested, the, the Traffic Committee, I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but Transportation Resource Allocation something or other, is going to be meeting, I believe it's on July 23rd, in this room at 3:00 or 5:00 o'clock, I'd have to look it up here on my calendar, but, and I believe that that, you know, the discussion there is going to be on the, the road maintenance system that they've come up with, the pavement management system that they've come up with, and, and how that will be implemented.
Can I read again?
Tom, do you know when that, that meeting is? Tom Grundy?
Okay.
Too early to have an agenda out, so.
Right, but the meeting is coming up.
Yeah, I think they're usually in the evening, although I'm not sure of that either.
Yeah, just for, just for information purposes.
Thank you, Commissioner S. Wine. Commissioner, no?
I have a comment.
That's what I was, okay, at this point, any public comment for the Growth Management Commission? Come forward and state your name, Porrasir, please, and just hit the button until you see green at the base there, then the mic's on. There you go.
My name is Lee Harder, I just have one question on how the responsibilities for maintenance of open space and other matters have been sloughed off from the city to homeowners' associations. Has that worked? And what if a homeowner's association doesn't perform like they should and clean up the neighborhood, or maintain a ditch, or maintain the open space? Is it working?
That's just a question.
Any other questions, and then staff will answer as we go. Any more comments, Commissioner, Jennifer? And respond to that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. These are all very valid questions, and one that are very real in the Parks and Rec Department. We have significant aging infrastructure issues that have, our parks have deteriorated, we have limited funds to rehabilitate our, our park facilities. As subdivisions come in, we've created sort of a new philosophy moving forward that, that Lee mentioned, and as subdivisions come in, we're requiring a maintenance association, a homeowners' association, or a similar organization to 100% fund the maintenance of any parks, trails, or open space within that community. So that helps, we work in cooperation with the Fire Department, make sure that there's adequate defensible space buffers that would include in that maintenance effort, and then we work with that association to develop the level of service standards for that maintenance. So that really works well in the city of Reno, Washoe County, and Sparks, and it's a model that just hasn't come here, but it is on the books with some of the new subdivisions. Lampa is one of them, when vintage happen, when it comes back, it will happen again, and that's our philosophy moving forward. So to go retroactively back to Silver Oak, or Long Ranch, or some of those areas where that probably would have been a really good philosophy to have, that will be difficult. But what we're trying to do with these older parks is reimagine them, and when we rehabilitate those parks, is to create them in a more maintenance-friendly manner. One example is our playground system, we're getting rid of the five bar and the bark, and we're putting in tile. That sounds like a really simple, easy thing to do, it's a very significant initial investment in the facility, but it requires zero maintenance, and we're good for 20 or 30 years. Where typically every six months to a year, you're filling that playground up with bark. It's costly, requires staff, so we're just looking at our park system in a different manner, and that's kind of how we're taking that approach.
Jennifer, along that line, then, with this question, who would have the power to enforce if someone isn't maintaining or doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Well, if there's a subdivision that's approved, and then you have a homeowners' association that is failing to meet the standards that were approved in a maintenance plan, and typically it would talk about weeds, it'd talk about debris, graffiti, but still making sure that the public has access to those parks and open spaces. The city would have the authority to go in, put them on notice, give them time to cure that situation, maybe there's a faulty contractor, you know, things do happen, and try to work with them. As a secondary measure, we're putting in deed restrictions on these subdivisions as well, so if the HOA fails to exist or goes bankrupt, like we saw that happened in the recession, you saw many in Spanish Springs, Kyla Ranch, for example, that went under, we can impose a landscape maintenance district, so it would still assess those homes to pay for that function, but then the city basically becomes the HOA and manages that, and then contracts out the maintenance. That's our last resort, we don't really want to get in the middle, but we can, if we need to.
Thank you for that clarification. Great, thank you, sir. Any other public comment? We'll bring it back, for possible action to adjourn as the Growth Management, or any comment from...
How about a motion, you need a motion?
Right, right. Yeah, that might come first, getting a little ahead of myself, for possible action, okay. Further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of a maximum of 679 residential building permit entitlements for the year 2020, with an allocation of 292 entitlements for the general property owner category, and 387 entitlements for the development category, and to continue the commercial and industrial development annual average water usage threshold, threshold of 15,000 gallons per day for Growth Management Commission review, and, and distribution and allocations for future years as further provided in the draft Board of Supervisors resolution.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We will adjourn the Growth Management Commission and reconvene as the Planning Commission. So as we said earlier, we are going to take the last item, G4, at this time. G4 TSM-19-054, for possible action, discussion and possible action regarding a tentative subdivision map to create 103 lots, single-family residential subdivision within the Lampa Ranch specific plan area, and within the Blackstone Ranch specific plan area zone, single-family 6,000, located at the east end of Railroad Drive and Solomon Road, APN Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. Again, as the chair explained, the request is to subdivide 26.89 acres to create 103 residential lots. The property is located at the east end of Railroad Drive. Access is proposed from Railroad Drive and from Fifth Street. Trail access is proposed to the future trail on the west side of Highway 395, and to the Linear Park, which is located to the north of the subject property. 100-foot drainage channel is proposed along the north side of the property, adjacent to the Linear Ditch. Street sections will include sidewalks on each side. The property is zone, single-family 6,000, but is also subject to the Lampa Ranch specific plan policies, as well as the Black Ranch, Blackstone Ranch specific plan policies. You may recall when I was presenting to you the Blackstone Ranch specific plan, I kept referring to the rules of the game, and I kept saying, these are the rules of the game. Once we figure out what these policies are, they'll then come back with the tentative map, when we're back with the tentative map. And if you, as you went through your report, you'll see I called out all those policies that were the rules of the game for the Blackstone Ranch specific plan, and I addressed exactly how the applicant had addressed each of those policies. When I presented the Blackstone Ranch specific plan to this commission, I focused on two things. One was the transition with adjacent properties, and the second was secondary access. Along the western property line, the applicant has created lots which will all exceed 6,000 square feet, with the smallest being 6,600 square feet. The adjacent developed lots on Trolley, Jock, and Jock, and I think one front on Railroad, are 74, about 7,400 square feet, with the exception of the one that's on the north side of Railroad, which is about an acre. From a transportation perspective, if you remember, when we went through the Blackstone specific plan, the real focus was secondary access, and the plan didn't dictate how that secondary access would be achieved, it said, you need to come up with secondary access, and it's not just emergency access, it needs to be a fully functioning secondary access. Well, the applicant is proposing to, has identified secondary access, and they're proposing to take that secondary access all the way to Fifth. As I was preparing this presentation, I again heard Commissioner S. Wine's voice... As I was preparing this presentation, I again heard Commissioner S. Wine's voice in my head saying, when are we going to build the roads? Here's the Lampa Ranch specific plan from 2006. In this plan, you'll see there's a spine road, and on the north side of Fifth, when the North Lampa Ranch specific plan was adopted in 2016, that was called the spine road on the north side of Fifth. It's supposed to connect to William Street. The applicant's still trying to perfect that connection. It appears to be getting close. They will stop on the north side of Fifth at 811 lots if they cannot make that connection, and they stop until they figure out how to make that connection going to William Street. But going south of Fifth, you'll see this collector roadway, per the specific plan adopted in 2006, is to connect all the way to Railroad, and I believe the wording in the specific plan says Railroad will be extended as a collector. And so what the applicant is proposing in creating this connection up to Fifth is essentially consistent with the specific plan. So to answer Commissioner S. Wine's question from almost a year ago, probably, the roads will get built. We have heard from the school district. This commission told me, don't bring a residential project to us unless you've heard from the school district, so I make the school district write something every time. They are concerned about capacity, but they're hopeful to have a solution in place when the impacts of this development are felt in a few years, and they are grateful that this project will not be using Fire Box as a secondary access. So actually, I meant to be on the slide I was on. So if we go back to the vicinity map, you'll see the school property is right here, and Fire Box is this road, and at the time of the specific plan, there was discussion of connecting through Fire Box, and the school was not comfortable with that connection, but that is not the proposal before you. In your packet, you have three written public correspondences. One questions the adequacy of the road going to Fifth. It questions directing construction traffic to this new road. It questions fire exiting, and it questions noticing. Second letter questions if there's the need for the owner's agreement at the time of development permits and questions why that agreement's not part of the application. It questions open space and trails, secondary access, the adequacy of the traffic report, the lack of open space retention, and the treatment of the floodplain. And the third letter speaks to sound impacts and notes that there's not a sound barrier between the proposed houses and the freeway from the noise. I want to speak to these items. The owner did sign the tentative subdivision map, and the owner will, and this is the owner of the property to the north of the Linear Park, so the question was, we don't have a copy of the agreement. The copy of the agreement is required at the time of development permit. This is a tentative map. Development permit is a construction permit. So at the time of that development permit application, that would be the time when the staff would require the approval of that owner to the north to construct that roadway that would ultimately be dedicated to the city. Is taking the road up to Fifth the right thing to do? I think it is. It's consistent with the master plan. It's what the buildout of Lampa Ranch envisioned was to have this spine road. The alignment of the road, particularly Railroad, the extension of Railroad Drive and where it crosses the Linear Park, is proposed to cross where it is to meet the Fire Code requirements. Fire Code requires two points of access, but also requires a separation of those points of access. So there actually is this thing we've been calling informally an easement in the Linear Park, which will allow for vehicular traffic to cross the Linear Park, but that didn't meet the Fire Code requirements. It had to be bumped in an easterly direction. Traffic analysis was completed. Based on that traffic analysis, it is anticipated we will have adverse impacts at the intersection of Railroad and Fifth. The applicant has agreed to, and we've conditioned this approval, that the applicant will pay his pro-rata share towards traffic improvements prior to the final map recordation. These impacts are based on the buildout of the subject project as well as the area north of Fifth Street. The public comments talk about conditioning the construction traffic to use the new portion of roadway. Staff will discourage this. It's just not enforceable. We can't, first, the infrastructure has to be built, and what the board said is they could even bond for the roadway, although it has to be built, the roadway has to be built prior to buildout. I just don't want, I talked to this commission before about the feasibility of conditions of approval, and I will not recommend to you a condition of approval that I'm not certain the city can enforce, and I'm not certain the city can enforce a mandate on a route. These days, everyone's going to their GPS, they're figuring out how to get there. If you have a brand-new road that's not even accepted, is not on GPS, it's really difficult to tell a construction worker, plumber, or electrician, you can't take the road that goes right there. It is a public street. I think it's okay for the developer to make requests of their workers, but I don't want the city to be in a position where we're being asked to enforce a pathway to a construction site. And there was a question about the noticing. Noticing went to 48 property owners within 600 feet of the subject property. The correspondence indicated it was only 100 feet. The tentative map does not have any open space requirements. The applicant was in error on page five of the application, where he indicated there's a mandate of 150 square feet of open space per unit. If we were dealing with a planned unit development, you have a mandate. If we're dealing with an open space development, we have a mandate. We're not dealing with either of these. This is a tentative map that meets the zoning requirements, and the applicant does not have a mandate to provide open space. In terms of the discussion of the flood zone, on page seven of your staff report, we report out that the flood zone is Zone X, which is an area of minimal zoning, and AH, which is a 100-year floodplain. If we look at the policies for the Blackstone Ranch specific plan, Policy 3.4.E states, "Prior to recordation of the final map, a conditional letter of map revision must be approved with design recommendations for the channel to accommodate 100-year peak flows." Condition of Approval 26, which is recommended by staff, requires the conditional letter of map revision prior to construction plans to ensure that these improvements address the floodplain. So the applicant is aware, staff is aware, that we do have the 100-year floodplain on this property. Construction will need to recognize that, and by no means has anybody tried to not recognize that. In terms of noise, this project is not going to be the source of the noise. The freeway is the source of the noise. Typically, the source of the noise is the entity that provides the mitigation. Since this project is not the noise source, staff is not recommending that this project bear any mitigation responsibility for noise that may come from the freeway. The Blackstone specific plan was thoughtful. I think you all looked at it three times. It kept coming back to you. You kept modifying it, and again, those were the rules of the game. I think that was sound, and I think that because that was a sound and thoughtful document, we are where we are today, and I think we have a project that staff can support with the conditions of approval. I've reviewed all of those policies that are applicable in the specific plan and addressed them in the staff report. We've reviewed all the findings in the municipal code, and staff has been able to make those in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval subject to the conditions of approval. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on a tentative map. Only the Board of Supervisors can approve a tentative map. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for staff? Commissioner S. Wine? No? I thought you were.
I do have, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Borders?
Can you put this map back up, the bigger one? Yep. Condition number 29 says all the streets must have a minimum asphalt thickness of four inches or whatever. Does that carry all the way up to, right at the edge before it goes, before the road continues on? Where does the four inches stop?
Everything you see on this page, it's proposed to be constructed, will be subject to that standard or a greater standard if that's what's recommended by the geotechnical engineer. And I will mention that's a standard being utilized on the north side of Fifth in the Lampa project.
Okay, but condition 20 says that the extension of Railroad Drive to Fifth Street must be constructed to at least a rural street section. Isn't that not gravel?
A rural street section, and then the plan said, I can look up the page that, I think it's around page 18 of the plan set, it gives you your details, and in the detail section, it shows you curb and gutter and sidewalk. Those things aren't required, but you still have a pavement requirement on a rural section.
Okay, so part of the tentative map approval is the fact that they're going to have to have that paved road all the way up to Fifth Street? Yes?
Correct, even at a rural standard. It's paved.
Mention you had some comments?
We're building in, or they're proposing to build in a floodplain, and I am going to say this again every time it comes up. I do not think it's good policy to build in a floodplain. I think that it's probably counter to the city's stated position with the Carson River Subconservancy about restricting building in floodplains. There are 32 lots that are going to be in a floodplain, and I understand they'll raise them up out of that, but then that has an impact on adjacent properties, and I just, I don't know. The other thing I want to note is, has anybody done a wetlands analysis on that property? Because I was out there yesterday, and it's very wet. And wetlands are valuable flood control. And if we're going to be destroying those wetlands, I just think that it's a bad idea. My comment.
Commissioner Tingle?
I currently live in a floodplain that was developed, and I am on my third sump pump underneath my house. I have another sump pump that feeds into my main sump pump because the developer, who was supposed to do all of the mitigation to prevent water from building up into your crawl space, didn't, or if they did, it wasn't effective. So I am with Commissioner S. Wine when you don't build in a floodplain, and while it's a 100-year floodplain, it's been less than 100 years that we've had this water issue. I've lived in my house for 19 years, and every winter, my sump pumps go all night. So, no, you don't build in a marshland where the water table just comes up. I mean, it just makes no sense, so.
Other comments for staff or questions? Staff would like to respond to that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you want, Stephen, too.
Stephen put out development engineering for the record. So this development will be required to meet our standards for development in those flood zones, which they have to meet all the national standards that FEMA requires, and then they also have to build homes so that their finished floor is at least two feet above the base flood elevation. I'm trying to remember what the other one was. And then also, any fill in the flood zone, they have to have a corresponding amount of cut so that they balance cut and fill, so that you're not just adding fill into the flood zone and moving the flood somewhere else. You have to balance that.
But if there are wetlands in there, how are they going to mitigate the wetlands on the property? Or are they going to, are we going to require them to do the mitigation off-site somewhere? And without knowing that, why, how can we approve a project?
So development engineering relies on the Army Corps of Engineers in their permitting process as far as the wetlands are concerned. So they'll have to apply through them, and then they'll decide what mitigation is necessary.
But is the Corps going to be out there to see whether or not there are actually wetlands there? Because my reading of the application says that there are no environmental sensitivities on this property. Wetlands are environmentally sensitive areas.
There has been a wetland delineation report done, and based on that report, the 100-foot drainage buffer that you see on the north side of the property is being proposed as mitigation.
Commissioner Press?
Okay, on this particular application, because I know we've revisited it many times, is it, does it specifically say that the Army Corps of Engineers are going to look at that just like we did at the one that was up off of Airport in Barais?
I was going to bring that up as well, because that was specific on that one.
I believe it is, because I followed up with the applicant regarding the wetland delineation, and I think I followed up because there was a requirement for the wetland delineation, is my recollection, and that's when he explained to me they had started the consultation with the Army Corps, and that's why the 100-foot buffer was in place. And we do have as part of the file, although I did not provide it to the Planning Commission, the wetland delineation.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? I know I am currently having, I've been in my house since 1976 on Fremont, just south of Sealer School. Three years ago, I ended up in a floodplain and have to buy flood insurance and all that sort of stuff. The school isn't, but I guess I am, even though I'm on their parking lot. I mean, that's all changed. Things seem to change quite a bit. Anyway, no more questions for staff?
I think my only statement would be that because that's been a ranchland for a long time, and it is in the Carson River City, the Carson River, the water comes down the hill and goes through there, okay? The question is, though, is that a recharge area? Because one of our biggest resources is water, and if that's going to affect the aquifer because we're going to put in all these impervious surfaces in areas that are typically recharged, that's a concern, so.
Any response to that as well?
It would, it would seem like if we had a formal determination by the Army Corps of Engineers as part of the requirement, then that would solve both of those problems. I don't know if, you know, I don't know what that necessarily involves, but I do know that it would make, it seems like it would make the commission feel better.
Well, I know that the one we did out by the other area was specifically in there, that it had to be done by the Army Corps of Engineers, and I would feel much better if it was in here as well, even though it may have already been done.
I'm looking for the policy. The applicant, Mike Rayly, is present. He may have information on it, or he may, I can look if you.
Okay, well, if there's no more questions for staff, why don't we ask the applicant to come forward, if you would, please, sir? Thank you. State your name and.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Rayly with Rubicon Design Group, here representing Blackstone Development. First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for moving this ahead. I unfortunately was double booked tonight and another planning commission in Reno tonight, so I do appreciate your willingness to consider this item earlier on the agenda. I think staff has done a great job going through the issues. As far as the wetlands are concerned, I know there was, I know the project that you're referencing over on the east side of Lampa, I don't see why we wouldn't be agreeable to a condition similar to that that would require the Army Corps review, so that's not a concern that we have. As you recall, those of you that were on the commission when this came through with the specific plan, the secondary access was a major concern. We had a couple of neighborhood meetings, and that was definitely the number-one issue. That's why it's taken us so long to get to where we are today. We've worked long and hard with the Lampa family in securing the easements and the agreements necessary to get that extension up to Fifth Street, and I think that is a huge kind of achievement that really was our number-one goal. Also, based on those neighborhood meetings, we did do some interior redesign of the project. We reduced the lot count slightly to address some concerns and provide some larger lots and that sort of thing, so we're definitely well within the requirements of the SF6 zoning. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, before we do, you're agreeable with the other 48 conditions?
Yes, and we're in agreement with all the conditions as listed in this paper.
And you're mentioning that if you're willing to have that other put in as far as the Corps of Engineers as another condition, hope is that able to be done?
Certainly, if the commission would like verification. Certainly, if the commission would like verification from the Army Corps of Engineers that they, they find that the improvements proposed, I would just suggest, for example, a condition of approval, I'm trying, I feel like we have it, but just, I'll recommend, a condition of approval that the Army Corps of Engineers approval must be in place prior to the issuance of any construction permit, and all construction permits must incorporate any recommendation of the Army Corps to protect recharge areas.
That's great. And from the comments from five, at least, of the commissioners, I think that would be appreciated. So we'll get the wording on that when we get ready to move forward. Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, public comment on this issue? If you would, when you come forward, I imagine you'd state your name for, and, as I say, hit the button when it turns green, you're ready to go.
Lee Harter, again. That's H-A-R-T-E-R, is what I'm putting in the paper. Would you please put up the, the site map, shows all the lots? Yes, that'll work. I live immediately adjacent to, and I'm gonna see if this little thing works. Ah, it's my cat toy, and it doesn't work on that. Yes, immediately adjacent to the proposed development. All of the Rubicon photos in their application show very nice pastoral scenes taken from the end of Railroad Drive. But what they forgot to show was what the place really looks like on the other end. I hope you've all read my letter, because I had a picture at the back of it showing what lots 48.
Wait, when you give the.
It was in my packet, but let's see what it really is. You can see, you can see the barbed wire Lampa fence, and about 15, 10 feet beyond that is the Endot fence. And that's the freeway, a large number of feet above where a house is going to go. And that's where they propose putting several of these lots. So most of the proposed development does not even have the three-to-four foot concrete barrier, which most of the freeway through Carson City has if it doesn't have a real sound barrier. There's nothing to stop the truck from coming through right into the back door. Now, at the very first hearing, very first notice of application for this development, I talked with staff about noise. This is not a new issue with me. But absolutely nothing was done. So recently, I took my phone and got decibel X Pro on it to measure decibel levels right along the freeway. I measured them at three points along the freeway. One right out continuing from Jock's Way where I live, and that's the high point of the property. One about midway down going north from there. And for a point of reference, there's a huge sign on the freeway marking the exit for Fairview Drive. That's where I took the middle point. And then I took measurements down in the hole shown on that photograph. All of the, all of my measurements, I put forward in my letter. And the average decibel level of there is quite high. It ranges from, from 60 decibels to the high 70s as an average. And peaks range from 80 to almost 100 decibels. I attached to my letter just a small sampling of scientific articles saying that decibel levels above anywhere from 60 on up are deleterious to people's health. It can be as small, as small increases in blood pressure to hormonal changes and the like. This is traffic noise, goes on 24 hours a day, and the proposal is to put people's residences right there. The scientific evidence is just part of what they have. So I submitted my letter, I submitted my study, and absolutely nothing was done. You know, the only comment we get is, we don't think that the developer should have to mitigate off-site noise. Well, what are you gonna do? You're gonna let this property be built with a health risk immediately next to it and do nothing? Endot's not gonna solve the problem. The city's not gonna solve the problem. Individual homeowners along there cannot effectively solve the problem. Only, only the, the developer can put something in at this point. Nothing was done on the basis of my letters, except saying, we don't have to do that, the developer doesn't have to. The numbers I collected were not verified, so they stand absolute. You have, in some cases, you have almost 100 decibels of noise going right by a person's residence. The planning staff could have checked with the Health Department. In the file, I found a note from the Health Department, we have no objection to this development. The Health Department was not aware of these very high noise levels on that property. We have some expertise right within the city, it wouldn't cost anything. Hey, doctor at the Health Department, 100 decibels adverse to person's health? That wasn't even checked. We're just developing. All I'm asking for is this matter be continued or denied, whatever you guys have to do for your timeline requirements, until there is a proper study by a qualified sound engineer, which would verify my numbers, and then some kind of proposed mitigation. That's all it is. If the commissioners want to sign off on this project, knowing there's adverse health consequences, there's nothing I can do. Any questions?
We'll take all comments, and then we'll respond like we did earlier with the other commissions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Rick Riando, good luck spelling Riando. I go by Old Rick, that might be easier. My biggest concern, other than the noise, and I gotta tell you, I listen to the freeway where I live on Railroad Drive. I listen to the freeway 24 hours a day. It's incredible. And I am convinced that there are some folks that around 2:00 in the morning meet on the freeway and race. About two times a week. It's amazing. And I suspect they take their mufflers off. They are very loud. And I don't live right next to the, that pasture right now where Lee lives. I live about four houses down on Railroad, on one of those pieces of property that has a whole acre. And in my mid-30s, I thought it was a good idea buying an acre. I'm old now. Guess what? An acre is a lot of work. I didn't know better at that time. The proposal is asking to build 103 homes on pretty much the same size piece of property as my neighborhood, that has 65 homes. That's a big difference. And I heard one of the last meetings regarding this business, that if each home is going to be considered to having two vehicles, they're not all going to Fifth Street. The access to the freeway is off of Fairview. They're gonna go down Railroad in front of my house, hopefully with mufflers. But they'll go down Railroad to catch Salomon, to catch Fairview, to catch the freeway. I don't like the freeway. I loathe it, but I use it. I drive down Salomon, cat, and catch Fairview, and you bet, me too, that's how I get to Costco. 103 homes for essentially the same size of acreage is a lot. Now, I know this. Where I live, there's one house per acre. There are eight houses, eight acres, on the north side of Railroad Drive. When I bought my place, it was like buying a little piece of country in the middle of the city. I left a rental of 26 acres out in Washoe Valley. And so this really appealed to me, the openness, the freedom, the air, the space, and the quiet. That's changing. You, now, in that same sort of northern part of the new Railroad Drive that's gonna go in, you've got 16 or 17 homes planned for there. Are you kidding? So I've got one house on my acre, they're proposing to put three to four houses per acre. That's a lot of houses, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of drivers driving past my house. I'm special. That's an issue to me. The other, and so I would like it to be reduced some. I, I think 75 or 80 homes would be more reasonable for that, but I, that's not my choice. I don't own that pasture, I don't get to make comments about it. I don't own Railroad Drive, so I don't get to restrict the traffic there either, or limit things. The other matter regarding the floodplain, I think FEMA was contacted, and they didn't respond, yet. Is that true? I don't think their lack of response gives approval. I don't believe that. But maybe, I don't know. I've not gone through this procedure before, this is all new to me. But I think it might be a good idea to hear from them, to hear what their report is. But I am very grateful to you folks of bringing up that floodplain issue and bringing in the Army Corps. I, thank you, from my whole heart, thank you. This whole business has been very much out of my control, and the noise level has been incredible since the freeway. I didn't know the freeway was gonna go there. I thought it was supposed to go on the west side of town. Boy, was I wrong, anyway. In the business about notifying residents within 600 feet of the pasture, and so 48 people were contacted, all 65 homes rely on Railroad. All 65 homes rely on that one single access to Salomon. That means all 65 residents weren't notified about this meeting. That's why I asked a member of the church to find out if they could put up a notification on the church's billboard out front. And they did, saying that this meeting was gonna happen, and it's important to our neighborhood. I don't think people made sense out of it, though. Didn't realize that the Planning Commission was gonna decide whether or not we still have peace, or whether or not we increase our populations by 103 homes. They weren't notified. I have walked the neighborhood with some of my neighbors, talking to them, and they don't all care, can I say? The most common response from most people where you can't fight City Hall, they're going, wait a minute, who does City Hall work for? Who pays City Hall's salary? I thought I did that. As a citizen, I would like to have my fellow citizens' noise concerns brought up from the freeway, even though the contractor building the neighborhood isn't gonna be responsible for the freeway noise. Somehow, that's gotta be blocked. If you drive down the freeway, you notice that the one big section that has no wall is along that pasture that's now going to be built. And I don't think the transportation people are gonna build a wall there. I think they're done with it. I think it's up to you. Anyway, thank you very much.
If we could try to keep the comments around three minutes or less, that would be appreciated.
We're gonna be real short.
Great, appreciate it, sir. If you state your name for us, and hit the button, as I said.
Yes, I'll keep this short. My name is Jim Fleagle. I think a lot of good points, by hope, was brought up in, as far as conditions and things like that. I'm encouraged to see that the issue here needs to be really brought up about the floodplain. I think that's very critical. We don't just want to move the floodplain to some other location, but I don't know how well the Army Corps of Engineers are concerned about us, but I hope they have our best interest. But yes, I, I think that floodplain is critical. Yes, I would like to agree with Rick on probably reducing the lots. Of course, the developer won't want to hear this, but going down to maybe 80 lots, you know, would be okay, to make them a little bigger. And yes, I would like, and of course, having the infrastructure, having built Railroad out to Fifth Street, have that done with the rest of the infrastructure before any construction starts. And I have said my piece. I hope that was under three minutes.
Can I come back?
Yeah, you can come back, go ahead.
Keep it very brief, if you would, please.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, in the time that I have lived in my home along Railroad, like I say, it's almost 30 years, the flood control canal has overflowed four times. The first two times, I went, oh, look, looky there, that's amazing. The third time, because my predecessors, the original owners of the house when it was first built, had a little girl, and they put carpet down under the house where the little girl and her friends played house. Okay, so there's carpet down there. I figured that as a result, it would be safe to store a few things down there. The third time that the flood control canal overflowed its banks, I saw it and went, oh, well, and, oh, I gotta get that album out from down there. And I opened up and went down under my head and found about an inch of water. When the flood control canal overflows, the water table comes up. So the fourth time that it did it, I purposely went over and took a look. And yep, the carpet that my predecessors put down there was saturated. Now, it all seeps back down again and goes away when the flood control canal goes down. But that's an issue, I think. You're gonna put 17 or 18 houses down on the same side, the north side of the new Railroad Drive towards the canal? I think that's not a good idea. I don't like what's happening with mine, either. But anyway, I meant to mention that earlier, and I exceeded my three minutes.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening, my name is Kelly Clark, I live at 1910 Jock's Way. Thank you for holding this meeting, and I just have a couple of questions that I would like to ask. I did already submit comment that you should have in your packet. And my questions have to do, number one, in municipal code, it's stated that, according to municipal code, before a development can be completed, there has to be necessary right-away easement acquisition. And my question is whether the North Lampa pasture has been purchased, or what the status is of the purchase of the North pasture where the street would run to Fifth Street. That's one question I have. I didn't see anything in the record stating what the land ownership situation was for that, and according to municipal code, all necessary. And according to municipal code, all necessary rights of way and easement acquisitions outside of the boundaries of a subdivision or development, including agreement as to access, ownership, and maintenance, will be completed at the time of submittal of application. I didn't know if this is an early process, but I think we're at the process right now. I would think by now that those acquisitions would be complete. So that's one question I have. Another question I have has to do with Carson City's definition of open space. I went through the application. As you can see in my notes, I'm an editor, and I kind of a stickler for detail. And when I looked at the application, it appeared to me that there were a couple of misrepresentations. Number one, there was a misrepresentation that the project did not exist in a floodplain, and the map showed that that's inaccurate. And then also, there were statements within the application that the project would add greatly to the trails and open space in Carson City. And I believe that's also a misnomer, because although there's two contact points with existing trails, the project itself does not add to the trail system, nor does it add any significant open space. The open space that's delineated in the plan is along the linear ditch trail, and that is not open space that we would encourage children to play in. It doesn't meet the definition of softscape in any way, shape, or form. And I believe that that should not be credited as an open space area in regard to how Carson City is wanting to develop its open space. So those are two areas that I thought the application was insufficient, and I thought that there were some misrepresentations in that regard. So I'll close out my comment, and thank you for listening.
And we'll respond. We actually responded to the letters before you arrived, when you started the presentation, but we'll go over that again, because Hope had addressed those earlier. But we'll answer questions once everybody has commented. Thank you. Other public comment? You okay?
I'm all right.
Hi, I'm Pam Johnson, 1413 Caboose Drive. I was very happy to hear that the access to Fifth Street had been acquired, and I was questioning the comment of, "We can't control the construction companies to use that access during construction." But I've seen many places where there have been huge signs put up at the alternate access saying, "Construction company vehicles use X access." So if we could have something like that, so that the construction companies knew that Fifth Street was the access and not go through our neighborhood, that would be a wonderful idea in my mind. Thank you.
My name is Heidi Morales. She spelled the last name M-I-R-E-L-E-S. I was wanting to understand better how the roadway is going to intersect with Fifth Street. Where exactly in regard to the Fifth Street Bridge? And has Enda approved that or been asked to even consider the location where it will intersect? Okay, and then I agree with everything that all of my neighbors have said.
I apologize to everybody for my coughing fit.
Other public comment?
I'm here.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back, and if we can, between us and Hope, respond to some of these.
Mr. Harder has not just the correspondence he provided to you, but he's provided me with quite a bit of correspondence, and we've talked about the noise from the freeway. I have spoken with the applicant about that noise. The applicant is aware of the noise, and I'll let the applicant's representative speak to the commission about how the applicant plans to construct the site to address the noise impact to his particular project. Having said that, I do believe, and I've said this before, it's not that I don't recognize that there is noise from the freeway. It's that I don't believe this project bears the responsibility of mitigating that noise for off-site receivers of the noise. But I think it's going to behoove the developer clearly to construct his project to recognize he's next to a freeway, and that might mean a triple-pane window. It may mean dropping the building down to let topography benefit you in terms of sound. But I also believe that's his responsibility. I'm not recommending conditions of approval to dictate how he improves his site to cause his product to be marketable in terms of Rick Riando, he talked about noise as well, and he talked about traffic on existing railroad. And I want to go to what Pam Johnson said, because I thought that was an interesting idea, and I had actually thought of that but had not articulated it to the commission. I don't want to sign up the city to be the traffic enforcement officer. Having said that, I don't think there's a problem if we were to ask the applicant to put a sign saying, "Construction traffic, please use the other road," recognizing the city's not going to enforce that should a vehicle go down existing railroad. So I think Pam Johnson came up with a good idea that maybe you're thinking that's a little misleading if the city's not going to enforce it, but I think it's a good neighbor policy, and I think that that could be helpful and may go a long way. So he had concerns about the existing traffic. In terms of FEMA and FEMA's role in development review, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Potte to talk about the sequencing of a FEMA review relative to development.
Stephen Potte, Development Engineering. So one of the residents had inferred that FEMA hadn't officially responded. That doesn't necessarily mean that FEMA hasn't been communicated with. Rob Fellows, our chief stormwater engineer, works really closely with them and also is well aware of what they will and will not approve, and the applicant has been working closely with him on this design. So moving forward, we're confident that the design they're proposing will eventually be approved. Oh, yeah, and timing-wise, so there's actually two FEMA applications required for the development. One is for the road going north to Fifth Street, and one is for the subdivision itself. So those are operating independently, and the permits for the construction that depend on those approvals won't be released until we have those FEMA approvals.
And Kelly had asked about acquiring the access or whatever.
Still on Mr. Riando. He talked for a while. Joking. Okay. Well, he was concerned about the noticing. When we notice, we notice in like four different ways, because we know we don't capture everybody by first-class mail. So when we mail to people, I think it was 48 people within 600 feet received notice by first-class mail. We also put down the city's website, the state's website. We post it in the newspaper. We take an ad out in the Saturday newspaper, and we post on bulletin boards. So I just want to put that on the record, that we don't rely solely on first-class mail when we notify of a public hearing.
I want to add, on the noticing too, because we get it occasionally, why don't we just expand the notice? It's actually, no, why don't we expand the notice beyond what's in code? We do not expand the notice beyond what's in code. It's a constitutional equal protection issue. It's very consistently enforced. We can't do any less or any more without being prejudiced to one side or the other. So our advice and our practice has always been to follow the rules exactly, no more, no less.
And fairly recently, in the last couple of years, we expanded what we noticed considerably, because I know when I first started, eight or nine years ago, we had, I think it was, what, two, three years ago, Lee, that we went through, and it had actually enlarged quite a--
Yes, correct.
And I'll just point out that Carson's a small town. And so when this application came in, I actually reached out to Mr. Harder and Mr. Riando to let them know it was in and to invite them to come review it. So staff did outreach. We didn't have an obligation to do that. I just knew from the specific plan they had that interest. So I don't want this commission to think that we don't try to reach out to the community and be transparent. Thank you. Okay, Jim Fliegel. He wants fewer lots. It's not a question. He wants to ensure the road to Fifth is built before they build the houses. That will occur. It may occur to that rural standard that Commissioner Borders referenced. That still means it's paved. That just means it won't have the sidewalks. It won't have the curb and gutter. And then it has to be improved to the urban standard prior to build out. Kelly Clark asked about the owner's signature and easement acquisition. Typically, you would see the easement acquisition after the entitlement and before the construction, and I believe the code section she read reflects that. The owner has signed the application for a tentative map. She discussed the definition of open space and indicated that this project does not add to the open space or to the trails. As we discussed earlier, I think the applicant was in error when, in his application, he indicated that the code required 150 square feet of open space per unit. There is not a requirement for a tentative map to do that unless you're doing a planned unit development or an open space development. So I can see where that was confusing, because the applicant did, I think it was on page eight, state that, and the code does not mandate that. The project is in the floodplain, so if the application indicated otherwise, that's an error. The staff report has absolutely acknowledged that's in the floodplain and identified the necessary conditions to work with FEMA. I bumped Pam Johnson to the front, so she suggested the sign to direct traffic to a different location over on Fifth. And Heidi Morales wanted to understand where Fifth will intersect, or the railroad will intersect on Fifth and the consultation with Enda, and I'll have Stephen Potte answer that question.
Stephen Potte again. So when we were looking at the connection there, we actually looked at the size that a roundabout would potentially be to see if that would fit, not just the connection as it's shown, because looking forward into the future to maybe the year 2040, there's the potential that that sort of infrastructure could be needed, and it looks like it will fit. There's definitely some grading that needs to be done, as you could imagine, because it starts to go up for that overpass, but it's not something that can't be overcome.
And if I were a construction worker, as far as access goes, I think I'd rather come down Fifth Street through a field than going through a school zone, having to turn down through houses, et cetera. So I think with signage, et cetera, common sense would be that's probably the simplest access, especially when school's in session. But then again, we aren't going to dictate that, but I think the applicant can address that when he comes forward. Any other coverage? Hope you suggested the applicant would respond to what, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
I'll address the noise comments first. Certainly, the freeway does generate a lot of noise, and we're well aware of that. There will be disclosures provided upon sale of those houses, that they'll be subject to freeway noise. There's ways to mitigate that through building materials, such as, as Hope mentioned, triple pane windows and that sort of thing. The other thing, if you look at our grading plan that was submitted, the area where those houses are located is in an area of cut, so those, the actual finished floor elevations will be anywhere from five to seven feet lower than what it is now, which will help with the mitigation. In terms of buffering the existing houses, our project will actually help buffer noise from existing residences, so the existing residents should see an improvement in noise. I do question some of the readings that were in that. I would tell you, any acoustical engineer would tell you never trust a noise monitor that you download as an app on your phone. Just to give you, I looked at, actually Purdue University publishes, and the comment was made that it's 100 decibels. That's the equivalent per Purdue University of a Boeing 737 or DC-9 at takeoff. The noise levels are not at 100 decibels right there. I would bet my life on that. So we're well aware that it's a noise, but we're well aware that we need to address it internally, and that's something we will do. The floodplain, we have conditions to work with FEMA, and we're very well aware that that's going to process that this project will have to go through, and we're agreeable to all those conditions. As far as the number of lots, when we originally had our first neighborhood meeting, we're proposing 138 lots, and we reduced that down to 103 based on some of the input we received. Just to give you a frame of reference, the existing zoning would allow for up to 195 lots. We're asking for 103. And I think that's everything that Hope has addressed, so we're happy to. If there's anything else, we're happy to address it.
And as far as maybe signage or encouraging--
Oh, yeah, and absolutely. We would be able to a condition that we will post a sign--
To be a good neighbor, I'm sure--
Yeah, absolutely. We have no problem with that.
And like I commented, it would make more sense to come in the other way, anyway, when you've got a school zone and it's 2015 through there or whatever.
I agree. I think the contractors will find that much more convenient.
So you're looking at lowering the grade of the houses--
Correct.
--in a floodplain?
Not the entire site is not in a floodplain.
Okay. I'm just saying, okay. I'm sorry. I must have misunderstood you, because when you're-- the parcel of land that you're going to be developing, is that not in a floodplain?
A portion of it is, correct.
A portion of it is. Okay. So the portion that is in the floodplain, you will not be lowering those houses below grade?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to be clear, given, wow.
Any other questions for--
I'm going back to what Mr. Fliegel asked for, because we just reread the conditions to ensure that Fifth Street would be constructed before they built the houses. And I'd like to take Condition 17 and make it an A and a B. And Existing 17 can be B, and 17A would state that the extension of Railroad Drive north of the Linear Park to Fifth Street must be constructed prior to recordation final map. That will ensure that Fifth Street, even to a rural standard, is constructed prior to recordation, therefore, prior to construction of houses, which is how the specific plan reads, and I felt it was here, and I'm not finding it, so I'd rather say it twice than not say it at all.
You good with that as well, sir?
Yes.
We'll have that plus--
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine will be as far as getting the Corps of Engineers specifically or whatever. And we're amenable to all of those. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring it back for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner, I was wondering--
Well, I'm going to harp on this floodplain issue. You know, he's got 103 lots here. He's got 30-some-odd that are actually fully in the It would seem reasonable to reduce that number of lots in the floodplain so that we weren't impacting the floodplain. You know, we have to get around, we have to address this issue at some point, and I think that, you know, starting now would be a good time. And I'm going to say, you know, what I said that the last time we had a floodplain issue is, just because you can engineer it, doesn't mean that it's a good idea.
Remember, that was one of your comments on the other. But if that's the case, then if you're going to reduce the lots in the floodplain, the acreage can make up to 190-some lots, so you're going to allow them to increase the lots in the other area. Would be my question if I were the applicant or the contractor.
Usually, I've had experience with the Army Corps of Engineers, and when they come in and they look to mitigate a floodplain or into a wetland, what they will do is they will actually be the ones that will take impervious surfaces out and ask for a relocation. So I don't know if that's been your experience, but that's been mine.
Well, I know that they require mitigation, and it can be off-site mitigation, but my issue is not mitigating. It's actually not even getting to the point where you have to mitigate. It's actually not even getting to the point where you have to mitigate.
Any further comment on that? Again, my question would be, if we're looking to do that, do you continue it? Or do you then say, okay, if you want to consider removing some lots out of the floodplain, are you going to permit them to still put 103 lots in there, maybe by putting more that aren't in the floodplain in other parts? In zoning wise, he could put, as he said, up to 190, I believe it was? Just for discussion or comment, I mean.
Well, he would have, if he were, if he were going to take them out or reduce, or put them somewhere else, he would have to come out back with a whole new map.
So as Mr. Preston said, if the Corps of Engineers comes in and says, okay, you can't put 20 of these houses in, then we would just go back to do it different, to redo the map, correct?
If the map, if the map wasn't substantially consistent with what the, or the board approves, then yes, it would be a revision to the map. Two other quick things. I did find, when I suggested 17A and 17B, I did find the condition that stated the construction had to occur prior to final map, so 17 can stay as it is. And I just want to point out for the benefit of the commission, that Commissioner Swayne is considering the physical characteristics of the land, such as floodplains, earthquake faults, slopes, and soils, which is the ninth finding you're supposed to look at, and that's on page 11 of 22. So as you have that discussion, it's appropriate to frame it according to what you're supposed to be reviewing, and that specifically is called out.
And again, we're just approving the map at this point. The map, then this is like step two of the process.
Right. This is a tentative map. So what will need to happen after this, per the conditions of approval, is the applicant will be consulting with the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as with FEMA. And any requirements those agencies identify will need to be incorporated into the construction plans. We then would, with that information, or with those changes incorporated, provided we're still looking substantially at the same plan, they would obtain an improvement permit, incorporate those changes, and build the roads and so on and so forth. If you look over at Lampa, north of Fifth, and you see the dirt that's stockpiled, and you see the construction going on there, what's happening there are those ditches that they're required to construct. They do not have a final map, they have a tentative map. And so they're constructing the floodway improvements, and actually, they're not constructing yet because they're still waiting on Army Corps. They have the stockpile there. Then they, they're in for permit. But we're waiting for them to get through the Army Corps process before we'll issue those permits. Once they build their infrastructure, they then can come in and seek final map approval. Once we have final map approval, the lots exist and they can start building houses.
Thank you for that clarification. Back for further discussion or a motion. I'll try a motion. I move to recommend approval of the tentative subdivision map, TSM-19-054, based on the ability to make the required findings and subjected, subject to the conditions of approval, including 49 is the only one we need to include. And if you would read kind of what that would be, Hope?
I believe 49 will say, "The applicant shall consult with the Army Corps of Engineers relative to the wetlands, and all recommendations and requirements of the Army Corps shall be incorporated into the construction plans to protect the recharge area."
Thank you. So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Wiggins, seconds. I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to two. Commissioner Tingle and Commissioner Swayne opposed.
We're going to schedule this. This will be, just to note for the record and the public that's here watching, this is a recommendation the Board of Supervisors will tentatively schedule this for the Board of Supervisors meeting on July 18th, Thursday.
That's all for that item, and we're going to take at least a five-minute break if we can.
All right, we will reconvene, and there's going to be another minor agenda change. We're going to take item G2 next, which is on the sign, since the applicant needs to get to a class or whatever has another requirement. So, anyway, moving on. Oops. Here we go. Public hearing, G2, SUP-19-076, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit to continue the use of an existing billboard in general commercial GC zoning located at 5853 South Carson Street, APN 009-304-06.
Thank you, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject billboard has been placed since 2004. It's located on the east side of South Carson Street, just north of the Johnson County, I'm sorry, the Douglas County line. The billboard meets all the standards except the setback from the redevelopment area. However, Carson City Municipal Code 4.8.4.6 that's in the development standards advises that the continuation of a non-conforming sign may not be denied on account of the sign failing to comply with the setback from a redevelopment area. Therefore, staff has reviewed the seven required findings of fact for the special use permit. We have made those findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending renewal of this billboard for another five years, subject to conditions. Isabel Rosino, who's taking accounting classes, is present, and I'm happy to answer questions, or Isabel can answer questions as well.
Any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Hello.
First of all, you're good with the record conditions of approval?
I'm sorry, one more time?
You're good with the conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
Anything you'd like to add to what Hope has already said?
No, everything she said is correct.
Great. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. We'll take, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment on this, if there's any public comment on this item. If not, we'll bring it back for further discussion and recommendation or motion.
Mr. Chairman, rest one. I move to approve SUP-19-076 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Borders, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Thank you. Take care now. Next item, G1, SUP-19-082, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit to construct a booster pump station on property zone, single-family 21,000 plan unit development located approximately 390 feet east of Longview Way and 530 feet north of Waterford Place in a long ranch planned unit development, APN 007-392-39.
Thank you, Heather Ferris, Associate Planner for the Record. So, this is an aerial photo of the project location. The parcel is one of the open space parcels in the Long Ranch Estates Plan Unit Development. The subject parcel is 9.9 acre, 9.92 acres in size and designated as Open Space 2 on the final map of Phase 4 of the subdivision. The parcel was deeded to Carson City in March of 2004 and is primarily utilized for the trail system opens and open space, but Carson City also maintains a well in the eastern portion of the property. The deed specifies the uses for subject parcel as open space, pathways, landscaping, parks, drainage, and other related public facilities. As part of the east-west transmission main project, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to construct and operate a booster pump station in order to provide adequate pressure to pump the domestic water from the end of the 24-inch water main located north of Long Ranch Estates to the quill tank located on the west side of the city. Booster pump stations and similar facilities are allowed in the single-family 21,000 zoning district as a conditional use. Since it's a conditional use, it can only be established upon approval of a special use permit by the Planning Commission. The pump station would be located in the western portion of the subject property approximately 30 feet from the nearest neighboring property line. It would be housed in a prefabricated pump house. An emergency generator would also be housed in the pump house. The pump house would be approximately 15 by 52 or 780 square feet. The exact height has not been determined yet, but the applicant has indicated that it will not be over 15 feet tall, which is within the con-
I said 15.
15.
Thank you.
The applicant proposes the use of hardy plank siding and metal roofing. So, here's some photos of the site. As you all know, there are seven findings of fact the Planning Commission must make in the affirmative in order to approve a special use permit. Staff was able to make all seven findings and is recommending approval, subject to the conditions included in your staff report. Based on the comments we received, and we received two different emails, which are included in the packet, I'd like to focus on finding two, which requires a project be compatible with the character and integrity of adjacent, of the adjacent development and neighborhoods, and consider adverse impacts such as noise, vibrations, fumes, et cetera. Staff was able to make this finding based on the design and the conditions that we've recommended including, and I'll touch on some of those right now. So, the biggest concerns that were raised in the comment letters were noise and aesthetics. The facility is designed in such a way to limit any potential noise impacts. Other facilities, similar facilities in the city with similarly sized pumps were measured to operate at between 55 and 60 decibels when standing between 5 and 15 feet from the facility. As noted in the staff report, the closest home is approximately 55 feet away. The nearest property line is approximately 30 feet away. The pump will be housed, excuse me, will also be housed in a prefabricated insulated building. So, considering the insulation as well as the distance between homes, the noise levels during normal operations are anticipated to be negligible. The pump will be running 24/7 during summer months. However, during the spring and fall, it will run for approximately eight hours per day, and during winter months, one hour per month. The backup generator will also be housed within the building. The generator will have a hospital-grade muffler to help dampen the noise, and when in operation, will be approximately between 60 and 70 decibels. And for comparison, 70 decibels is approximately equivalent to a vacuum cleaner, and 60 is approximately equivalent to conversational speech. The backup generator will only be in operation during emergencies and power outages and once monthly for maintenance and testing. Staff has recommended the inclusion of Condition 7, which limits the use of the generator to emergencies, power outages, and the monthly maintenance. Monthly maintenance can only occur between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. With regard to aesthetics, staff has recommended several conditions to help to ensure the facility will be compatible with the surroundings. Conditions 3 and 4 require paint colors to be neutral or earth-tone colors to blend with the surrounding environment and complement the existing homes in the neighborhood. Planning would review the paint colors at the time of building permit. Additionally, all exposed metal surfaces would need to be painted a non-glossy paint to complement or match the exterior. Condition 5 is recommended to address any potential impacts from exterior lighting. The applicant would be required to submit the details for the proposed two exterior lights with the building permit application. The lights would be required to be shielded and projected downward, not horizontally or upward, and would be limited to being in use during times of maintenance visits only. Finally, Condition 6 requires the submittal of a landscape plan for review and approval by planning staff. Additionally, the applicant will be required to coordinate with Parks and Rec to ensure the landscaping is integrated into the existing landscape and drip system. Brian Elder and Tom Grundy with Public Works are here and may be able to answer any specific questions you have about the overall transmission line project or the specifics about selecting this, this location for the booster pump station. And with that, I'm available for questions as well.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Borders?
I'm looking at the site plan. Why, why does it not make sense to have the pump station on the other side of the intersection of the two pipelines? It puts it farther away from all the houses. It puts it closer to the access road and, and the utilities. It's, it's a foot and a half or two feet difference in elevation. I'm talking about over there, just kind of go due east to the other side. No, no. Go back to where you were. Yeah. Just see where the two pipelines intersect on the map, the perpendiculars. Why not put the pump station on the other side in the, inside the perpendicular?
So, I would let them answer.
Okay. That's my question, because the access road is right here. Put it right there. It's farther away from houses all the way around. Do you understand what I'm asking, you guys? There may be a good reason, but it just seems to me if we're worried about making noise, we're kind of in a hole in a gully anyway.
Yeah. Brian Elder with Public Works, Project Manager. So, see what you're saying. The reason it's there, there's a certain elevation to stay out of the 100-year floodplain. I know it looks like it's just like a foot and a half, but if we moved it a little bit into the east direction, we'd be right on the edge of that 100-year floodplain.
All right. That's a good reason.
Other questions for staff or for the applicant?
Oh, would you go ahead and extend? That access road's going to go ahead and extend down to it, then?
Yeah. So, as part of the project, there's a bunch of asphalt trails that are going through there, both west and east and west, and then to the south. And as part of that, we're going to be reconstructing all the path because there's going to be damage done during construction, and then anything to the south that's damaged will be taken care of.
Well, we have you there, and you're fine with the nine recommended conditions of approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or for the staff? Seeing none? Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
This seems like a silly question, but does, does the city have to pay for a special use permit?
We did not transfer the funds between the two departments, no.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We will bring it back for any further discussion or motion or recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a-
Commissioner Borders? Oh, I thought I did public comment.
I'd like to make a comment.
I already did.
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you for taking it out of the floodplain.
Yeah. See, it can be done.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve SUP-19-082 based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval indicated in the staff report.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner S. Wine, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Thank you. a special use permit for outdoor storage on property zone, general, commercial, and public regional located on the west side of Airport Road, south of Budai Way, APN 010-041-76.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject property is actually split zone property. A portion of it is general, oh, sorry. Start again. The subject property is a split-zoned property. A portion of it is owned general commercial and a portion is owned public regional. As it is split-zoned and the use is only allowed in one of the two zoning districts, the use can only be established subject to a special use permit. The applicant is proposing a boat and RV storage for 275 vehicles plus a 1,000-square-foot sales office. The site will have a dumping station, an RV boat and wash, an RV and boat wash station, and a propane refill area. No mechanical services will be on-site, and customers are proposed to be prohibited from repairing or maintaining vehicles on-site. Hours of operation will be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with the office open from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. The site will be entirely fenced with solid fencing and security gate. I wouldn't typically show you a picture of the fence, but I really like the fence, so I conditioned it that it has to be this fence.
You could put that along a freeway, couldn't you?
I also don't usually talk a lot about surrounding land uses, but I want to do that. I've gone back to the vicinity map. To the north of the subject property is the tentative map that you recently approved for East Lampa, and the portion that's directly to the north of this is where that public dog park was going to be. To the south is a drainage facility. To the west is a drainage facility, and across the street on the east is the animal control facility. So, it's kind of, has interesting neighbors, if you will. The site is subject to the Lampa North specific plan. I've reviewed in the staff report all the relevant policies, and I found compliance with those policies. As you know, in order to issue a special use permit, there's seven required findings of fact. Staff has reviewed those findings, and we've been able to make those in the affirmative. With that said, we are proposing to an amendment to condition of approval number nine, the first bullet, and we are recommending that that bullet state, this project must, I'm sorry, let me start again. The project must either balance flood, flood zone cut and fill quantities or may have a net gain of cut to increase stormwater detention. There may not be a net gain of fill. And with that change, we are recommending approval. The applicant might, yeah, I will. It's interesting because applicant Michael Vick, who's an engineer, is present, and when I read his application, I, I don't know if you had this takeaway, but my takeaway kept say, I kept, I just kept reading, "We're going to increase detention. We're going to increase detention," and those were sort of the positives. And I actually went to Stephen Potey, I said, "Are they really going to increase detention?" He said, "Yeah." And so, what that means is because on two different sides you have those stormwater facilities, what they're proposing to do is to increase the volume or the capacity to store stormwater as part of this project. And so, what he's saying is rather than balancing cut and fill, which was the conversation we had on the tentative map where they had to balance, they weren't going to be able to bring in a bunch of fill, in this case, he's saying, "No, we want to actually, we don't want to balance. We want to end up where we have more capacity to store stormwater, and so, we want our cut to exceed our fill." Okay? And with that, Michael Vick is present, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I contacted or asked Hope, I think, just today or whatever. I was concerned how this would affect the other apartments and tentative apartments and housing, et cetera, if it was all tied together or whatever, and that's where this came, came in from Hope. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant come forward, please?
Thank you. Mike Vick with Modern Vista Consulting, representing the Sierra Tahoe in RV and Boat Storage. We-
First of all, Mr. Vick, you're comfortable with the 21 recommended conditions of approval?
Yes.
Along with the amendment to the one?
We've reviewed, and with the proposed amendment, we, we do agree with those.
Great. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Yep.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Not seeing none. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything you'd like, I'm sorry, you'd like to add to her presentation or?
I think Hope did a great job, and we're happy to field any more questions you may have, but I think that pretty much covers it. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it forward for further discussion, comments, or a motion. Well, seeing none, I'll make a motion. I move to approve SUP-19-083 based on the findings and subjects to conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Second?
I'll second.
From Commissioner Borders, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you.
Not much. Just to report briefly on the items that were approved or that were in front of the Planning Commission previously. Oh, there were those master plan amendments and zoning map amendments that were part of the, initiated as part of the annual master plan review, just some kind of land use corrections plus some open space purchases. Those went to the board and were approved in June, and we have a few items, another, another agenda coming up in July. Don't have the full list in front of me, but what's the big one?
All the second reading stuff?
No, no, for the Planning Commission in July.
Oh, oh, tentative map on Little Lane.
Yeah, we have another tentative map on-
Little Lane.
Little Lane. I think another billboard review, some other smaller ones, accessory structure, but, but another tentative map coming in, another floodplain, a little floodplain a little bit. Yeah. We'll have another decent-sized agenda. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner reports or comments?
I think I've done my damage today.
No damage. No more than, what if I did? Public comment, the public is invited this time to comment on and discuss any topic that's relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Any public comment at this time? Seeing none. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.